To provide the venue for what I know will be some rich discussion over this evening and tomorrow evening as we get to hear from our candidates from both the school district and various city council candidates. It's always a pleasure to host these forums. As a teaching and learning institution, this is one of the benefits that we have to be able to continue to provide our community with an opportunity to continue to learn. And this is a resource that we're very pleased to be able to provide. So it was kind of stressful, wasn't it? Sitting up here for what seemed like an hour just with people watching you. So I think I need to turn it over to our moderator, Steve Henson. Steve, it's always a pleasure to have you on campus and host these forums. And so I think it's time that we get busy and let these fine individuals tell us what they're all about. So without further ado, Mr. Steve Henson from the Pueblo Chieftain.
Thank you, Patty. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to have everyone here tonight in such a good field of candidates. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the Pueblo Chieftain, the Governance Task Force of the 2020 Commission, and Pueblo Community College of Center for Media. A few words about the format. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves to you, to tell you why they're running for office. And then we will begin a series of questions and answers. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question, and we will be going pretty rapid fire between the candidates. So we'll be shifting around in the order so that all have opportunities to answer the question first and last. And those questions were posed by myself and Vince Guerrero of the 2020 Commission. So that's the basic format. The only other thing we would ask is kind of a cautionary note is we're glad that you're here, and if you're here supporting a candidate, that's great. We want to be respectful of all the candidates and their positions, so we'd encourage you to honor their commitment and their willingness to run for office by booing or hissing or throwing anything at them. We would appreciate that. Having said that, here's the order that we'll go in. There's no really democratic way to do it, so we're just going to go alphabetically in the opening remarks. We'll go with Dottie Calhoun, followed by Dennis Mays, R. Kenneth O'Neil, Taylor Voss, and Margaret Wright. I think I got that right. So we'll begin now with opening remarks from Dottie Calhoun. Dottie?
Good evening. My name is Dottie Calhoun. I'd like to thank the Chieftain and PCC for holding this forum. First of all, I'm a parent, I'm not a politician, and I'm the only person running who actually has children in a D-60 school. And because of that, I have a vested interest in what happens to the schools. But more than that, I moved to Pueblo five years ago. I'm not a native, but I've invested in this community, and I'm here for the long haul. And what I want is for a better and better and better Pueblo. And the only way we can do that is by a good education system. We will not be able to thrive if our education system goes down because an educated community is doomed for failure, and that's not what we want for Pueblo. One of the things I would like to see happen is that we need to listen to our teachers, and we need to address their concerns. That's one of the biggest problems I've heard from the teachers is that they have not been heard by this current board. And they're the ones that are setting the basis for our children. I think that it's time that we scrap the budget and we start from ground zero. And we take out the unnecessary and frivolous expenditures that they have. I'm one of those people that, you know, even if it's not my money, I'm still going to treat it like it's my money, and I'm going to be very frugal, but not to where it is bad for our children. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Keep going. You're doing all right.
I volunteer in the classrooms here, and so I know exactly what is going on in the classes. I know that the teachers need supplies. I know that they need better resources to help our children. I'd like to thank you all for listening to me. My name is Dottie Calhoun. Thanks.
We'll now have opening remarks from Dennis Mays.
I would like to thank the sponsors of tonight's forum for the opportunity to share a few thoughts with you about why Dennis Mays, retired judge, should be elected to the District 60 Board of Education. I have a proven history of making difficult decisions through the application of thorough and thoughtful consideration. I will bring my extensive experience as a problem solver to address the very critical issues facing the school district because of lack of attention. I believe that addressing and correcting the lack of fiscal responsibility, transparency, and community involvement will ensure that our children will once again receive a safe, nurturing, and successful learning experience. Every decision reached by the board should have the goal of bolstering our teachers, providing the necessary resources for them to fully accomplish the goals that lead to successful outcomes for every child and their families. Necessary to achieving those goals is careful planning of the budget for both the short and the long term. Integrity and openness in reaching decisions as opposed to satisfying political and personal agendas, and respecting and acknowledging the participation of those who wish to volunteer both within and outside our schools. We can no longer continue to kick the can down the road. Difficult and perhaps controversial decisions must be made to make District 60 schools the schools of choice. Rest assured that I will work tirelessly and conscientiously with your support to place kids first.
We'll now have opening remarks from R. Kenneth O'Neil.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's nice to see you all here tonight. My name is R. Kenneth O'Neil. A little bit about me. Served in the Army for 23 years, seven combat tours, credited with saving two lives in combat under fire. My qualifications, I taught the MG program for 19 years through the Military Training Network and Central Texas College. I'm an adjunct professor at Colorado Christian University where I teach policy and administration. In the community, I sit on the Board of Directors for D-60 schools, also the Board of Directors for Neighbor Works of Southern Colorado. I'm the Marketing Chair for Neighbor Works of Southern Colorado, State Chairman of USA Track and Field for the Men's and Women's Division, National Delegate for USA Track and Field Colorado, Class President for Leadership Pueblo, and panelist for the Emerging Leaders Program. What I want to bring, though, is something different, a different way of looking at issues. Not being from Pueblo and having traveled extensively, I see things a little bit different than the average person does here. I bring a different perspective, and I'm going to bring that to bear. I don't have the emotional attachments to any bad ideas, bad policy, bad administration. I don't cling to that. If it's best for business to change, I have no issues, no quarrels changing. I have turned in 11 pages of proposals to the board already that range from putting solar power on all Pueblo City schools to save energy costs, which the board has delightfully kicked back, to zero escaping all schools to save water, to creating a formula to combine schools, and possibly consider closing schools because we cannot continue to operate as we do. Since I've been on the board, I've been the swing vote to actually give our teachers that vote the raise that 1% to 2% for PEA and PPEA. So already, there's been some good things going on, good changes. And with your assistance, I'd like to continue to do that. Thank you.
We'll now have opening remarks from Taylor Voss.
My name is Taylor Voss. I was born and raised in Pueblo. I'm a product of Pueblo City schools, and that's something I'm very proud of. Pueblo City schools shaped me into the person I am today. They shaped me into somebody who is inspired and motivated to really get involved and step up in this community. After graduating from CC Pueblo in 2016, I moved to Denver, only to realize that I wanted to come back here. I wanted to come back and truly have an impact and make a difference in this community. So I came back, and I started meeting leaders in the community to figure out what are the challenges we face and how can I get involved? And after multiple meetings, I finally became overwhelmed because we faced so many challenges. And then finally, in one meeting, I said, wait, hold on. Where do we start? And the lady I was meeting at the time looked at me, and she said, education. She said, if you can really figure out education, you're going to have an impact on every other aspect of this community. And I said, that's it. That's what I want to do. We need change in Pueblo City schools. We need innovative thinking. We need a fresh perspective, new ideas, and a spark of energy to revitalize education in Pueblo. And I want the opportunity to be that change. Thank you.
We'll now have opening remarks from Margaret Wright.
Thank you very much. My name is Margaret Wright, and actually Dr. Margaret Wright, and I'm the right person at the right time. I have a PhD in educational research and policy analysis. I have a Master of School Administration. I'm the only candidate who has over 35-plus years in education, having served as a principal, assistant principal, classroom corps teacher in English, ESS teacher, ESL teacher, substitute paraprofessional for hearing impaired, and currently with my business right now as an educational advocate. I'm fighting for our children already. From the time I came to Pueblo, I began working with the students coming out of detention, helping them get back in school. Then I decided to start a business to advocate for the children. I go in all our schools in D-60, those that have issues with kids struggling with academics. I believe that we do need to have a stabilization of our infrastructure. I think that where there is no stability, the children suffer. So as a result, I think we need to look at our budget. We need to look at our teacher retention. We need to look at paying our teachers. It's a great job. If we want them to serve our students, then we need to bring the resources for the schools to be able to do their job. I also think as a community, we have to come together. We have to open our eyes and realize that we are a village, and these are our babies. These are our children. And we have to pull together the businesses, the other agencies, the organizations to make sure we work together. So I promise you, I will do my very best. And I'm a tiger, and I'm willing to fight. Thank you.
Okay, now begin the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the timekeepers, who will be holding up cards to help you keep track of the time. Don't cut yourself off in mid-sentence when they hold up the red stop sign, but please wrap it up pretty quickly after that in order to be fair to the other candidates. First question will go to Dennis. Dennis, critics of the district, including yourself, have said the board and administration are not transparent. Do you agree? And if so, what will you do to improve things?
I do agree. I have said so in the past. And I think what needs to be done in order to establish transparency by the way which also creates integrity and trust in the board is to open up our meetings to as much as we possibly can to the public, to curtail the executive sessions, to hold executive sessions at the end of the board meeting instead of the beginning, so that the citizens will have an opportunity to address those issues that they wish before they're kept in captivity waiting for the board to come out. I firmly believe that when decisions are made, protecting all confidentiality, that those decisions should be explained to the public as quickly as possible. And I believe that any inquiry made of the school board or the school administration should be answered as quickly and inexpensively as possible.
Kenneth, second question.
Transparency is an issue in the district, and there can be no discounting that. Since I've been on the board in the fire for so much that I've been on the board, I've been successful in pushing for a budget summit where we actually bring folks in who are shareholders to discuss this, to actually see what we're doing. Because the only way we can ever really move forward is by bringing shareholders and stakeholders together. They must be on the same sheet of music. One thing that I'm pushing for right now is each and every single quarter to have a public forum with everyone, everyone. Because even though, you know, some of us may be somewhat smart, we're not smart enough to figure out all the doggone problems in the world. And the only way to do that is to get folks who are actually affected by those issues to have a voice in those issues. Maybe they can help us solve those. That's really the only answer.
Taylor, same question.
I agree as well. I think transparency is definitely an issue. And I think if we really want to start moving forward, we have to build a team, and we have to have a family atmosphere and a family culture. And the evidence of that, that we don't have transparency, I've met with a lot of people in the community. I've met with teachers, I've met with administrators, and nobody's on the same page. And I believe that's because we really lack transparency. So I think we have to make it a priority, and the way I would go about doing it is one by one. You have to have conversations with people. We have to open the doors of communication, and we have to build the culture first on the board and let that extend out through the rest of the district.
Margaret, we're going to do a spinoff of that question. The board, and this isn't true of just this board, but it seems like District 60 boards for some time, do not appear to like the public comment section, comment period of the board meetings very much. What would you think about the board holding meetings regularly throughout the community with perhaps no agenda other than just to hear concerns?
I think you must have looked on my piece of paper. Because that's exactly what I think would be very important, to hold forums in the community, also focus groups, where you pull together groups of students, pull together groups of teachers, parents, all their constituents, and to give them an opportunity to tell us how they see things, what are their needs, and even allow them to give us some suggestions. You never know. Sometimes even as a teacher, you find your students ideas that enhance your classroom. So yes, sir, I do think that's very important for us to do that.
Dottie, same question.
Well, I think the board is beholden to the public. Quite frankly, we are the ones that are paying the taxes. These are our children that are in the schools. And to see the board as R. see them, overlords, and we don't get any answers from them is ridiculous. And so they need to have a community forum, like Ms. Wright said, where it's the parents, the teachers, community leaders, and the board. They don't like the public speakers. Well, that's because they haven't done a good job, and the speakers tell them that. So as I said, I think that we need to have some sort of community involvement. It's imperative we have it, and they're obligated to us to have it. Thank you.
Okay, our next question is for Kenneth. Many of the district schools that are struggling are in neighborhoods with numerous challenges. What innovations would you support to help students and parents deal with those challenges so that they can focus on education?
First, those challenges, thank you for the question, by the way. First, those challenges must, those that are affected by those challenges must be identified. Because we cannot, one size does not fit all. We have an innovation plan that just got approved, and so our schools that are not doing as well as they should be doing right now, they all have new innovation plans. We've replaced key personnel there. And, you know, these are the ways, these are the ways that you progress and you move forward. I'm going to have to ask you that question one more time because I went deep into something.
Sure. Many of the district schools that are struggling are in neighborhoods with numerous challenges. What innovations would you support to help students and parents deal with those challenges so they can focus on education?
Another issue that I have is that, you know, the budget is an issue. Funding is an issue. Funding for schools, funding for programs is an issue. So we have to, the budget, everything comes back to your finances. Everything does. There's one thing that I'm advocating right now is that we consider consolidating schools so we're not spending so much money and so many resources so thin. Because that's why our students can't get what they need. We're way too thin if you look at the budget that we have right now. Once we make those appropriate corrections to that and stop looking at cutting programs and look to generate funds, we can actually address those issues because they all come back to the almighty dollar. Thank you.
Dennis, same question.
There's no question whether each child that goes to school is entitled to the best educational learning experience he or she can have. We do that by having individual plans for each student. So for those students that are struggling and having a difficult time, and their families are having the same problems, what we need to do is identify the cause or causes of why those students are struggling in school. Once we may have been able to identify what those problems are, then it's incumbent on the board and the school administration to bring every community resource that it has to attempt to resolve those problems, whether they be transportation, whether they be mental health issues, whether they be substance abuse issues, or other issues within the home. The only way we can address it is if we identify the particular problem that is particular and unique to that individual child.
Dottie, I'm sorry, Margaret, same question.
I think Pueblo has a lot of resources and a lot of organizations that are helping in the community. So if we go back to the whole concept of PTA or community meetings, then we can identify where those need areas are. And I'd like to see us be able to use the other stakeholders to come together to help meet their needs. For instance, right now, I'm working with Judge Allen with the Truist Improvement Project. And at the table, we have someone from DSS, we have someone from Health Solutions, we have me as an education advocate, we have someone from other entities, and we meet with the family, we meet with the teachers, the students, and we talk about what the issues are. And then the different ones at the table come together and provide the resources. I think we can multiply that and use that model to help meet the need of the community.
Dottie, a spinoff question. Did the district do a disservice to convert schools to Corwin and Fountain to specialty schools and bus neighborhood children to faraway schools?
Well, I think they did a great service by combining Corwin and Fountain because they were struggling. And now they're one of the two middle schools, especially a middle school, that people want their children to go to. Unfortunately, the other middle school is in D-70, and we are not, we don't get a chance to see how they work. So I think they could have done that. Busing kids to other schools, well, it's an open campus where we have our open enrollment. So unless they're going there against their will, their parents have a choice as to where they can go.
Taylor, same question.
I think the intention was right, but in a way, I think they did do a disservice because we took a lot of those kids who were struggling in school, and they now went to a different school. And a lot of those same kids are still struggling. So for me to really empower those kids that need it most, one of my first initiatives would be to launch a citywide mentoring program. We have a large percentage of students in our district that don't have a consistent bed to sleep in. They don't know where their next meal is going to come from, and a lot of them don't have support and encouragement at home. And I think a citywide mentoring program where we pull people from the community can really fill that need. And I think it's our responsibility as a district to empower students in that way.
Dottie, you'll answer the next question first. Do you think the district holds too much money in reserves? Should the district use more of its reserves to pay for staff raises and classroom supplies?
Absolutely. I think they do keep money in reserves. And I've looked over the budget, and I've seen how the supplies have dwindled. I talked to a principal who told me that when he started 12 years ago as a principal, his budget for supplies was $68,000, and it's been cut almost in half to $35,000. That's ridiculous. In 12 years, the budget's been cut in half. He has a very hard time doing things, and instead of our teachers having to struggle and be creative and try to figure out ways to spread the money, that money should be there for our kids. That money needs to be there so that our kids can have access to arts and education, so that they have the supplies they need, so that they don't have to depend on somebody else having to donate paper to get the copies for their homework. It's just ridiculous. The school board needs to focus on the schools and not the numbers.
Taylor, same question.
I don't think that money comes from reserves. Reserves are meant to be used in emergency situations. And I think we have to be careful, making sure we have the correct and safe amount of money in reserves that we can use. We have a lot of aging buildings. There's going to become, there's going to come up a lot of situations where that money does need to be used. So I think we have to be careful and make sure it's in there. I think we have to really look at the budget, go through it line by line, and find that money somewhere else. Because I don't think reserves is worth lining down.
Dennis, same question.
The issue of reserves has been frustrating for me for the better part of a year and a half now. As I listen to the board discuss, we know we start with 3% of Tabor, they talked about 6%, then they talked about 8%, then they have an aspiration of 12%. Well, those shouldn't be guesses. Those should be carefully thought-out decisions as to what amount of money needs to be put in reserve to protect the district. And I say that for this reason. Let's just assume for the sake of discussion that 1% is equal to $1 million. If in fact, the reserve should be $8 million, and we're setting aside $12 million, what we are doing in essence is keeping $4 million from the classroom by saying that's what we want as an aspirational goal. That just doesn't make any sense to me. So they should be based, reserves should be based on fact and careful consideration.
Kenneth, a spinoff of that question. What changes do you advocate for preparation of the annual budget?
Say that again, please.
What changes do you advocate for preparation of the annual budget?
What changes? First, the needs must be identified. Our specific needs and a priority list must be given so we can address those needs. Because as of right now, we don't have one. When you look at our priority for our budget, priority for our administration, we simply don't have one. So once you identify, once you put a priority listing in place, now you can start to look at your budget, where your money needs to go to be best spent. And as far as that 12%, it was absolutely my idea to bring it down to 8%. We have to look at what the folks are doing and what is actually working, what's best practice. To me, 12% was way too high. And so when I asked, you know, well, why are we keeping 12%? The answer that I got, I didn't really like the answer that I got, but we did end up spending the money because those teachers deserve that money. They absolutely do. That money needs to go into our classrooms, it needs to go to our teachers, it needs to be spent wisely. So I am a huge advocate of going from 12% to 8%, leaving it at 8% because that's pretty much the industry standard, and moving on from there and handling the needs that we need to within our school district.
Margaret, same question.
One of the first things I think we need to look at, and this, I can say, I may not be aware of the entire process, but look at how we do the budget. Because we're amending the budget, and how is that amendment impacting our students and our teachers? I think we need to have a system-wide plan, a five-to-10, 15-year projection over our students, our teachers, what kind of courses we're going to offer, what our needs are going to be. Because if we look far out, then we can do our strategic planning to ensure that we get to where we need to go.
Okay, our next question, Taylor. Do you believe there are schools that need to be closed? And are there areas in the district where new schools need to be built?
I do think that we do need to close some schools. We have a decreasing enrollment, and that's a very hard decision to make. I know it's something that would be extremely unpopular in the community, but the fact of the matter is, we have a lot of schools that are 50% full. And I think we would be better off moving those kids to a different school and combining resources rather than trying to continue keeping up a school that's only 50% full. As far as places where a new school would be needed, I'm not really sure where that would be. And that's something I need to look into more and educate myself a little bit more. But I think we may have to close some schools in the future. But I think we may have to close some schools in the future, even though that's a tough decision to be made.
Dottie, same question.
I disagree with the schools having to be closed. Unless they combine two of the smaller schools together, our classrooms are already overcrowded. Our teachers have too many kids in their classroom, and it's very, very hard for them to teach. As you can see, I'm all about the kids, and what I want for them is to be able to learn. An overcrowded classroom does not make for good education. And I believe that, yes, we need to figure out a way to save money, but it cannot be to where we just close a school and then force them to another school where the teachers actually have to have a bigger classroom. The teachers already have to deal with so much with so little. Their resources are very, very limited. And we have to find a way to make everybody get the best education they can. And I just don't think that closing schools right off the bat is a great idea.
Kenneth, same question.
Absolutely, we do. We are going to need to close. As a matter of fact, I came up with an SPSS-based formula on which schools need to be closed because we cannot kick this can down the road indefinitely. We get paid $7,800 per student from the state, okay? When you look at how much we're getting per student and the maintenance cost, our schools are old. The average age of the schools in our district right now is 51 years old. So it's costing more every single year to keep that building just in operation, whereas we're losing money because we're losing students every single year. So we're getting less money to go into the school, but the school is costing us more every single year. There is absolutely no way to keep going at this same pace. It's not going to work. Right now, we've got $40 million worth of damages to our schools. $40 million right now. There is absolutely no way we're going to get $40 million. It's not going to materialize out of thin air. So we're going to have to at some point, even though it's a difficult decision, a person must have the backbone to make those difficult decisions. I'm in favor of that.
Dennis, a spinoff of that question. A blue ribbon panel comprised of such leaders as former state Senator Abel Tapia conducted a facilities report, but nothing came of it. Should the district dust off that report or convene a new study group?
I don't think it's necessary to convene another group. I know exactly what you're talking about. You're talking about the facilities master plan that I think was submitted to the board sometime in 2016. And it is, by understanding from talking to members of the panel, that it was just put on the back shelf. A matter of fact, a number of them were disappointed that it was not given much consideration at all. That goes to my issue about community involvement and respecting and appreciating the hard work that these individuals do. Absolutely, it should be looked at. There's no need to go back and spend whatever the dollar amount was, $40,000 or so, I can't remember exactly, for that report, and now perhaps even more money to update that report.